Super-dupers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We would like to call to order the January 7th, 2015 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Would you join us in a moment of silence, please? Thank you. There are no changes to the agenda.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Our first item is the election of officers. Mr. Lawrence, just with that.
Thank you. As we've done every year, I'll lead the chairman and vice-chairman elections, and then I'll pass it back to your new chairman. With that said, we're looking for nominations for the chairman position for the Planning Commission for the 2015 calendar year. Open up for nominations.
Nominate June Wilmot.
Second.
Okay, we've got a nomination for Ms. Wilmot. Do we have any other nominations?
Move nominations be closed.
They are closed. All in favor of Ms. Wilmot to be the chair for the coming year signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, Ms. Wilmot.
Thank you.
We also have the vice-chairman position open for the calendar year 2015. We'd open up nominations at this time.
Nominate Roger Thomas.
Second.
Got everything closed. Got a nomination for Mr. Thomas and no other nominations. All in favor of Roger Thomas for vice-chair for 2015 signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. And now it's my honor to open the nominations for the position of secretary.
Nominate Eric Lawrence.
Second.
Are there any others?
Move nominations be closed.
Second.
And we will now vote that Mr. Lawrence should be our secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Our next item are meeting schedules, and you have a nice paragraph which repeats what we do, and that is the first and third Wednesdays of each month at 7:00 PM.
There it comes, finally. I guess I got cold.
And I would suggest we go ahead and adopt that. We need to add one little thing to it, and that is an inclement weather date. And we identified that the following Thursday of the same week of the meeting that we had to postpone be our inclement weather date. So, all three of those together?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The Plans and Programs Committee meets on the second Monday of each month at 7:00 in the first floor conference room, and the Development Review and Regulations Committee meets on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM. And I would like to suggest that we adopt those.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll move on to committees, but first I would like to just ask those Planning Commission members who serve as a liaison to an organization to go ahead and continue on if you'd be so kind. And Gary with the Transportation Committee and also Historic Resources, Mr. Oates.
Yes, ma'am.
Sanitation Authority is Mr. Unger, and Conservation Easement Authority, Mr. Triplet, and the Winchester Planning Commission would be Kevin Kenny. And I'd be grateful if you continued on. As far as the committee assignments are concerned, if you'll give me a couple of weeks, we'll have some communication and see that you're in the slot that you want to be in. And at the same time, what we can do, at the same time, what we can do is make sure that we have the proper number of "we the people" on the committee. So if anybody's got a desire to serve, now's the time to let us know. Mr. Lawrence, you going to do the bylaws?
We shared the bylaw revisions with you last month, and at that time, everyone was comfortable, so we're presenting them to you tonight, the same format you saw last month. The one change that is not in here is the revisions to the proffers, which we said we'd visit after a couple of months of some new agenda mailings to make sure we're okay. But otherwise, the bylaws and roles and responsibilities are consistent with what we talked about last month.
So?
Move for adoption bylaws and roles and responsibilities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Our first item is a public hearing item. It's a rezoning, 05-14 CB Ventures LLC, submitted by CB Ventures LLC to rezone 2.42 acres of property from B1 Neighborhood Business District to B2 General Business District with proffers. The property is located at 1033 Ailer Road in Stevens City and is in the Opeckin Magisterial District. Mr. Ruddy.
Madam Chairman, I need to recuse myself. I advise the applicant early on as a consultant in a professional capacity.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, we also have the, prior to jumping into this item, if we wanted to go back and we could do the, any approval of any minutes, committee reports and citizen comments, we could either do that before or right after, but be happy to...
The minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
If there are those items before this public hearing that you want to get to, we'd be happy to do that, or we could continue.
Exactly. Thank you very kindly. There was a lot of activity going on up here. Okay, we do have a set of minutes from November the 5th, and we'd like for your consideration of those.
Chair, recommend we approve the minutes from November 5th. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And also citizen comments. This is the time on our agenda where we ask you folks if there's something that you would like to discuss with us that is not on the agenda, and particularly not a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak with us? Seeing none, we will close the citizen comment portion. Thanks for getting me back on track, Mike.
You're welcome. Okay, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, thank you very much. This is rezoning 0514. It's the last one of last year for CB Ventures LLC. Very briefly, it's a rezoning request to rezone 2.42 acres from the B1, which is the Neighborhood Business zoning district, to the B2, the more general business district of the county. The request includes some proffers, and of course, it's designed to accommodate additional commercial uses on the property. It's within the Opeckin Magisterial District. To highlight the property on the screen to your left, it's highlighted, of course, in black, and it, two properties are part of this rezoning application. The northernmost property currently contains the Bubble Works Car Wash Facility, and the southern property is currently vacant. You can see it's adjacent and just along the east side of Ailer Road, which of course is, runs along the east side of Interstate 81 in this location, just south of Ailer Middle School, in front of the Plymouth Owens Residential Subdivision, and of course, just north of the commercial development along Fairfax Pike. On the screen to your left right now is the zoning that's reflected in that area, the current zoning. And you can see the current zoning of this and the adjacent properties as B1 Neighborhood Business, to the rear, of course, the residential, and then the B2 Commercial, to the south, the front sun Fairfax Pike. Now, the request, of course, is for the B2, which is a commercial, more intensive commercial use. Commercial uses are generally consistent with the comprehensive plan in this location. Of course, the commercial uses covers both neighborhood commercial and more intensive commercial development. So when considering this request, the neighborhood character of the adjacent land uses, both the commercial and the neighborhood residential, is definitely a consideration. The applicant's request includes a generalized development plan, which is in your agenda and on the screen to your left. To zoom in a little bit, hopefully we can see somewhat clearer, the existing lots, the existing car wash facility, and you'll notice that there's a kind of a significant road realignment that runs across the front of the property. And so what this generalized development plan does is it recognizes the realignment of Ailer Road, consistent with the plans that are being developed by VDOT for the Route 277 project. It's relatively significant, of course, because any rezoning application, it's important that they recognize the county and state road plans and accommodate that when they're able to. So it's, through this review process, what they're providing, proposing with the dedication of the right-of-way is consistent with the VDOT plans at this time. So as we move on, we, of course, want to evaluate the potential impacts with this proposed land use change. There are several that we should always consider, and I think it's evaluated in the application to a certain degree, and of course, in the staff report. But when we move from the B1 to the B2, there's the increased intensity of use, the potential for that. Obviously, the B1 is more of a neighborhood scale, so when we go to B2, that potentially includes a drive-through, car lots, fast foods, and hotels. On the transportation side of things, that leads to more vehicle trips. And when we look at the B2 development, it also allows an increased height limit and floor area ratio. So it goes from a 35-foot height limit to the potential for a 60-foot height limit for hotels in the B2 district, and from a 0.3 floor area ratio development to a 1.0. So it just highlights the potential change from the B1 to the B2. That's illustrated, if you will, with some recent projects, just to give you an idea, as we like to do. This is the CVS and Sensory Road where you have existing residential adjacent to a B2 development. And out on Route 50 by College Park, we have the existing residential development, and of course, the B2 Commercial on Route 50 right there. This is, of course, the Aloft Hotel. Apologize, the sunshine darkened that one up a little bit, but if we look from the other direction, there's another hotel, another example of how this typically works, and this is just a little further along 50 in that location, again, with the residential behind it. Again, to give you a little idea. So the generalized development plan, again, that's included with this application, shows the property, it shows the road improvements, but beyond that, it doesn't show anything else with regards to the development of the property. Of course, all of the uses would be allowed. The proffer statement that is included has gone through a variety of different reviews. It addresses the things that have been provided correctly, and the applicant has been working with Mr. Williams here and finalized that today. So to the satisfaction, if you will, of the county attorney, the proffer statement is in the appropriate legal form. Of course, it contains three proffers, one for property access, one for right-of-way dedication, and the third being for site lighting. Following the public hearing this evening, we're, of course, seeking a Planning Commission recommendation on this rezoning application, and ultimately, the Planning Commission is responsible for determining if the neighborhood character of the area will be adversely impacted by this rezoning request, and that all of the appropriate impacts have been addressed. Madam Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I'd like to recognize Mr. Ben Montgomery, who is here representing CB Ventures this evening.
Any questions of Mr. Ruddy? Yes, Mr. Unger.
Mr. Ruddy, how much, is there any more B2 along there?
No, sir. The B2 that exists, now jump back to the location map, if I may, is on the bottom part of the screen, and let me jump it up here, and that is the McDonald's that is McDonald's and Burger King, which of course, are closer to 277. So as you can see on the screen there, I may just highlight, this is generally the location of the McDonald's and the B2 zoning. Of course, it includes the McDonald's, the Burger King, and the Wendy's in that location. What you'll see surrounding these properties, and in the purple-pink color, is the B1 Neighborhood Commercial zoning. And that, of course, when you perhaps compare the scales, that's the existing 7-Eleven. I think there are a couple of medical offices in that location, a tax office, and that's what the B1 has developed into in that area.
Anyone else? Thomas?
The uses for the B2, of course, B2 is a lot more intensive use, a lot more generation of traffic. When we look at those lots there with the future VDOT road coming up through there, the one parcel is pretty much cut up, that it's, there's not a lot, a lot there left for use, and that's dedicated as one of the proffers. There's no proffer shown as far as height restrictions or any other type of use. So behind those houses there, we could end up with a three-story hotel, a four-story hotel, a gas station that's open 24 hours a day. And granted, we have it down at the corner, but the housing, the residential area there is somewhat separated from the B2 areas down in the corner. So we'd be moving a much more intensive use up Ailer Road, quite a distance from where it is now. I mean, currently, we have a 7-Eleven, which isn't that busy. We have Dr. Steeble's office there.
Car wash.
This would be moving, it would be leapfrogging, so, because there wouldn't be, it wouldn't be B2 the whole way up there. What we'd be doing is essentially then accepting that the lots between this and the McDonald's would then probably eventually go B2 also.
So that would be the result, the B2 users would, with more intensive development standards, would be then able to go on these two properties. In many cases, the proffer statement is a tool that can be used to mitigate that or minimize that by adding additional restrictions that can make it blend into a certain degree. And the applicant has provided a proffer with regards to lighting, but you're correct, floor area ratio, height limitations, things of that nature are other things that can be incorporated into a proffer statement, if that's appropriate, to help mitigate the impact.
And you said the, there was a difference in date in proffer statements, so that's all been worked out?
Yes, sir, it has, and a signed proffer statement was delivered this evening.
With which date?
Today's date. Yes, today's date.
Anybody else?
Again, Mr. Montgomery is here representing the application tonight.
Mr. Montgomery.
Well, thanks, Michael. I just would like to add, as far as, you're correct, as far as the lot size, it gets cut down with the annex of the right-of-way for the relocation of the road. With that occurring, it limits the number of, the amount of square footage. I calculated the traffic impacts to be an increase of about 10% versus what could occur typically under the B1, if it remained B1, as is now. So the parking requirements limit the square footage that is allowed to be put on the property. As far as the impacts on the residential area, B2 does require the full screening. We have a 25-foot active barrier, our active area, and then also a 25-foot inactive area that it will be full screened. And then the closest house is an additional 75 feet from the property line. So approximately 125 feet from any building back to the first home. So you've got a sizable distance between the properties, and so we believe that mitigates a lot of the impacts that would occur in the residential areas. As you have seen, McDonald's is backing up to the same residential area. You know, that far down, we wouldn't expect a fast food. We certainly wouldn't eliminate that from the possibilities, but you know, this doesn't lend itself very well to that type of use. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Stay by, yes.
That said, you can still put a 60-foot hotel in there?
That would be correct, yes, sir. The parking limitations, we couldn't put a 60-foot hotel in there. The four-story would probably be the maximum we could put in that area if it went a hotel. And that would be the same for an office building.
You have a question, Roger?
And that answered mine. We was thinking on the same track there. If we didn't have the parking, how could you put a 60-foot? So you answered that for me, thank you. We all seem to be talking hotel. Is that what our intent, is that where you're heading with this?
No, sir.
There is no planned development for this property at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, if you had a planned development.
No, sir, we do not. This is to allow the property owners to have more uses, that it would allow it to be more marketable, also allows the greater density. With a B1 zoning, it's very difficult to make the numbers work as far as from a commercial use, either whether it be a strip center or whether it be an office area. So having a little extra density that would be allowed in this area, plus the additional uses, makes it more developable. Yeah, Greg.
Mr. Unger.
With that said, that you're not planning on doing a motel, and I'm very familiar with the area, would you be, would you consider some kind of limitation on the height of the proffer of it then?
I mean, we would be, we would address that. I mean, we could go, we could stay it, keep it at 45 feet. We wouldn't want to go back to 35 feet. We believe that a four-story, either office or hotel, would work in that area as far as the parking, so we would want to be sure to have that available to us.
Knowing the area, I could see like a CVS going in there with that type of height.
Yes, sir.
I couldn't see a 60-foot motel going in there.
No, sir.
That's why I was asking if you'd consider that.
Yes, sir, we would consider it limited to 45 feet.
Sir, in one of your communications, I believe, to Mr. Ruddy, let's see, the note said that we have listed additional B2 land uses to be proffered. Maybe I'm the only one who couldn't find what they were.
We were, I was making a mistake when we were looking at the land uses, that there were, there are several, the way the zoning ordinance is written, there are several uses that are accepted, that look like their uses, and so we were looking at accepting those uses, such as massage parlors, et cetera, but that was not the case. That's not in the zoning. They're not allowed in the zoning. So the ones we were looking at proffering out weren't allowed to begin with.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Montgomery? Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this rezoning? Yes, sir, if you'll come forward, please, and give us your name and Magisterial District.
Kevin Chapman. I'm in the Opeckin Magisterial District. I reside in, at 106 Downing Circle, the property, residential property directly behind Lot 104, where the car wash is currently located. I have several questions, and would like to see what answers I can get tonight, as well as to make my comments heard and go on the record. The first question is, was or were the previous owners of these parcels an associated company or subsidiary of CB Ventures LLC?
Excuse me, just go ahead and give us your questions, and we'll get them to the right person to answer.
And did anyone associated with CB Ventures have any ownership stake in the previous ownership of these parcels before they were sold to CB Ventures? There's a reason for these questions. My wife and I are aware of a pre-existing environmental concern regarding dumping of presumably hazardous wash basin materials from the car wash on Lot 104 onto empty Lot 105, as witnessed by my wife and reported to Frederick County by me with an unknown outcome. We're concerned that there still may be environmental contamination on Lots 104 and 105 that can affect our property, which is downhill of those lots, and potentially reach the water table as well. If this was not previously investigated on the county's watch and remediated if contamination was found, I believe this should be thoroughly investigated as a proffer condition and remediated if contamination is found. What will the county require, or the owner proffer, to ensure proper investigation and remediation has been or will be performed? Tall evergreen trees, assumed to be planted as part of the existing site plan for Lot 104, have very large weed trees, if you will, growing up through them. This looks to be weakening the evergreen trees, and certainly will do so progressively in the future. These trees serve as both a sound and visual buffer, and the structure at the entrance to the drive-through portion of the car wash would be very visible along the rear of our property if the buffer trees were to be compromised by these weed trees. What will the county require, or the owner proffer, to ensure these and any future buffer landscaping elements are properly installed and maintained going forward? The grass on the rear of Lot 104 has not been mowed consistently for the past few years. To my knowledge or observation, the rear of Lot 104 was not mowed at all during the spring, summer, or fall of 2014, as evidenced by the thistles and other invasive weeds on the rear of the parcel. Permanent vegetation has been mostly choked out in many areas. Due to the lack of adequate permanent vegetation on the back of that lot, sediment has been previously transported by sheet flow erosion onto our property, under our perimeter fence, and deposited in our yard. This is unacceptable. What will the county require, or the owner proffer, to address this concern in any way more substantial than just denoting simple permanent stabilization in this area on, say, the Phase 2 ENS plan sheet in case this slope is not properly maintained in the future? We routinely find blowing trash on our property that, due to it being mostly fast food and convenience store trash, along with the prevailing westerly winds, could reasonably be attributed to the car wash on Lot 104. What will the county require, or the owner proffer, to increase the effectiveness of trash collection receptacles to inhibit wind-borne trash? I'm not making these statements or asking these questions to prohibit anyone from the proper use of their property or doing anything that they are legally allowed to with the property. I also assume CB Ventures wants to be known as a positive contributing member of Frederick County and our local community, as well as a good neighbor, and as such, I'm sure they're going to be happy to receive clarification on the extent of their property bounds and be willing to maintain it going forward. I look forward to that occurring. In the August 22nd, 2014 rezoning comments, it stated that it is not anticipated that this application will construct improvements to relocated Ailer Road, but instead dedicate right-of-way and provide physical access and transportation contributions with the VDOT six-year plan taken into account. If the proposed stormwater management pond across relocated Ailer Road is not installed at the time of the improvements on Lots 104 and 105, it's my concern that Phase 1 and/or Phase 2 ENS controls will be planned to discharge stormwater during construction to the rear of Lots 104 and 105. Point source discharge of sediment-contaminated stormwater, even if it's treated with temporary BMP devices, will potentially erode our and our neighbors' properties and leave sediment-staining and settlement in our yards, culverts, and other stormwater conveyance channels and structures. This is not acceptable to us as longtime residents of this community, and I'd like to know what the county will require, or the owner will proffer, to provide mandates that as much denuded area as possible drain to the west and southwest sides of Lots 104 and 105 during and after construction. In large part, we've already addressed there not being a 60-foot height requirement or maximum, instead of it perhaps being 45 feet. Even a 45-foot structure is not going to be blocked from the view shed of our backyard with a 15-foot tree. Now, a cypress tree may grow quickly, but for a number of years, we'll have a large structure dominating the back view of our yard. So that leaves me with the question. What exactly does the applicant need to accomplish in this rezoning that the B2 designation is required? Mr. Montgomery, who I certainly have nothing against and is a personal friend of mine, has made it clear why they want to have this flexibility. However, I share Mr. Thomas's concern that we're leapfrogging. We're stepping a good way up the road, and as my neighbors, I'm sure, share the concern with me. What will Ailer Road become, and how much more do we stand to lose? Thank you very much for your time and your attention.
Thank you for coming. Would the applicant like to respond to a goodly portion of these?
Well, let me, let me start with the last one. If you look at the realignment of Ailer Road, the question of leapfrogging...
You're in public hearing right now.
I can't address the question.
Did you close the public hearing?
No, I did not.
Will you just continue?
I'm sorry. I was trying to get to the answers to the questions. Anybody else want to speak to us? Anybody? Sir, could we have your name, please?
Excuse me, Ulysses Kerricker. I live at 110 Downing.
I live at 110 Downing Circle, Stevens City.
Thank you.
And my property is also about 20 feet below where the car wash is now, and a 60-foot light just could basically light up my whole yard. The main things about rezoning, the thing that we're all worried about, of course, is, is, you know, of course, the storm runoff, lighting, traffic flow, foot traffic, as well as automobiles, sewer systems, water, and of course, the main thing is security. We don't want anything that's in the B2 to be able to infringe on ours in any way, whatever. The only way I can really see that accomplished is, is building a Berlin wall, all the way from, from Harman old way to 277. And anyhow, those are some of the main concerns. Then also down the street, about two blocks away, is a schoolhouse. When the bell rings, these kids come pouring down Ailer Road. They go to McDonald's to get their goodies or Hardee's, 7-Eleven. Some of them are brazen enough to go to KFC, and if anything along there, like, like a motel or something of that sort, I don't think these kids are in a, a safe area. I, you know, I just, if, if one of the renters of the hotel decide they would like to have a young kid, you know, it could either entice them, the kid might be naive enough, or just wanted to experiment, and next thing you know, you got bunches of problems. And, but I, I think most of the neighbors also sit my way. I, I don't, I don't really, it's not, to me, it's not conducive for anything greater than be one type of business. Thank you very much.
Sir, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this rezoning? We will close the public hearing now, Mr. Montgomery.
I'm sorry, I got up prematurely.
No, I asked you.
Concerning, and I'm going to go to leapfrogging first. If you look at the realignment of Ailer Road, Ailer Road cuts off the lots that go all the way to the corner. Michael, can you flip up the zoning, the map? I'm sorry, I don't know how to use your iPhone. Once Ailer Road cuts off, you lose all the rest of the B1s except going on the interstate side, so...
You lose the B2.
In essence, you're not leapfrogging at that point. We, it becomes the corner lot for Ailer Road going on down the street. So in that respect, it's not something that's going to be surrounded by B1 once this, because the lots, most of what Valley Health owns is going to be gone, and then the lot in front will be taken up as well. Concerning development of the property, Kevin has some legitimate concerns as far as erosion of setup control. Public Works has been fairly stringent, at least in, in dealing with me, on, on these items, and they, I don't expect they would be any different. All of that, though, would be addressed in the site planning process, not in the rezoning process. You know, there are county requirements for all of these items, silk control, as far as also stormwater and detention management, and also now they have to have, we have to have the new BMPs in place as far as water quality, as well as detention water standards. So the standards have, in the county, are actually increasing, and therefore, I don't, I don't see that that would be addressed here as a rezoning issue. Concerning the trees, the existing trees, I would say, looking at the, at our development plan, most of the existing trees fall in, in the inactive buffer. They would remain, so the mature trees would remain, and I understand Kevin's concern as far as upkeep of the trees and upkeep of the area. I would like to point out that CB Ventures also owns the car wash and, and retail properties that face Fairfax Street, right around the corner from this area, and they give an indication of the maintenance that they do on these properties. These properties are well-kept, they're, they're nice-looking facilities, well-built, and, and the, the architecture is pleasing. And so I think a lot of the concerns from a development standpoint would have to be addressed during the site planning phase, and to include the, the buffers and maintenance and the fencing required. Right now, it does require a six-foot fence on the backside of the property. It does require three rows of trees on the backside of the property facing the residential properties, and so that's the current requirements if this property was developed. I'm sure those won't be cut back by the county standards. Also, one of the owners, Mr. Browning, would like to address, as far as Kevin's concerned, with the previous owner and what was the trash that he was alluding to. I will say, before he gets up there, there was a Phase 1 environmental study done on this property prior to the owner buying this property, so there are no contaminants on the property to include the, the exact, the gas station that was there in the early 80s. And so a Phase 1 study has been completed, and there are no contaminants on the property at this time.
Mr. Browning.
Good evening. I'd just like to touch on two things. We acquired the property from the previous owners, which was Upper Crust LLC. If you know the history, they, I basically went into bankruptcy, I think, is what happened, so the upkeep of the property wasn't, it was not in good condition. So we've came in, we cleaned it up a little bit, but it's not a very vibrant business, so that's one reason why we went to change the zoning. And in addition, we were very active with the, with VDOT when they were working on the realignment. And if you recall, the realignment used to, the previous one, actually went right along the residential property lines, and I actually worked with VDOT to have them move that road so it was not in everyone's backyard, because people were very unhappy with that, and we also wanted to develop our property as well and not have the road go right through it. So, does that answer? So as far as the previous owner, they're the ones that did, had the runoff and...
Sir, were you speaking to the mic? Sorry.
Previous owners are the ones that were dumping the car wash waste on the property that ran off into Kevin's property. Okay.
Would you be kind enough to give us your name?
Edward Browning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions at the moment? Mike, is there anything you'd like to respond to in the list of things?
There are thirty questions, the commission, some different.
All righty. Is the Opeckin District...
I guess I have a question for staff.
Yeah.
Since the realignment of Ailer Road is, the routing is fairly established, would they be allowed to develop any of that property that's in that alignment? Now, they're proffering to dedicate it, but does that dedication prevent them from putting anything in that?
Yes, it does, but of course, the first proffer allows them to have access over that and through that. So the way it's set up is that development will be outside of that right-of-way, but until the road is realigned as part of that project, then they can continue to use the existing entrances on Ailer Road or a improved entrance for the use as approved by VDOT. And at such time, the right-of-way and the road improvement is put in place, then they would have to revert back to using the new access. Any costs associated with relocating the access across the dedicated right-of-way would be borne by the applicant.
So they could not put a parking lot in that dedicated area and use that initially as parking spaces?
That's correct. They would be able to use it as an access driveway back to the property that's outside of the right-of-way.
Hey, Larry.
Anything else?
Sure. Mike, you mentioned Aloft Hotel and CVS, since we wrote this good example of its rezoning. Using the Aloft example, how, how was the situation mitigated? The proximity to the residential area and college park?
That's an existing, it was an existing B2, so it was an unproffered B2. They mitigated it, or they provided a buffer, a zoning district buffer, much the same as you would anticipate here. A six-foot opaque element, which was a board-on-board fence and three trees per linear feet. I think you saw from the two examples there that the Aloft one was a pretty significantly high building and the landscaping of, that building's been up for about six or seven years now. It's still pretty minimal when it comes to the growth and the buffering of the actual building mass itself. It certainly mitigates the parking and circulation visibility from the adjacent residential uses, but not the mass and lighting of the building. So that, in both of those cases, and in addition to the CVS there on Sensory Road, which was used as an example, they just use the existing buffer standards.
Mike, you said today, as of today, the profits are legal. Is that, is that the right term you, so these profits haven't changed, they're just now legal in the form that they were presented?
The profits that you have in your package have been modified to address some of the outstanding issues that the county attorney had with the, the language that was contained within it. The county attorney and the applicant were finalizing those today, and we have the final approved proffer statement here today. Now, you don't have the benefit of that, so it's at the discretion, of course, of the planning commission, if you feel that it's appropriate to, to, to take action on this rezoning this evening or delay that for an exit, for a period of time. It certainly didn't meet what your 21-day standard, but please be comforted, if you will, to know that the county attorney is, worked with the applicant, and the proffer is in the appropriate legal form.
Okay. Thank you.
What was the staff review on, completed on? The staff review is completed on the previous proffers, not the proffers we received today. Is that...
The county attorney's review, absolutely, yes. And much like the proffer with the uses, the additional uses, the county's, the planning staff's initial review was on, of course, the, the initial submission.
So even with our expedited process, this doesn't meet the 10 days or what we're looking at for our expedited review of getting revised profit?
That's correct.
So it would be, we would have the ability, if we chose to table this tonight?
You certainly would if you felt that that was appropriate.
They probably, they probably shouldn't do something about the heights.
Mr. Mellon.
Madam Chair, I think one of the concerns, and I think I've heard it from, from a couple colleagues, is, you know, kind of the lack of specificity about kind of the development parameters or the intensity that could occur here. I think in general, I understand the argument of, of proceeding to B2, especially given the, the future realignment of the road. I mean, I, I think that, that makes some sense. A little uncomfortable that this is, is kind of just open to what the ordinance would, would allow. And so I think if we were inclined to table this based on, on the, the proffer issue, I would like to see a little bit more put into the, you know, to the application that deals with the potential for building size and development intensity, particularly the, the comment was made earlier that there'd be some acceptance to limiting, you know, building height. I think that's an important consideration, and if, if they're not comfortable with doing that, or if they have a particular height in mind, I think it would be beneficial for me to see some type of a cross-section or some other type of exhibit that would give us a better sense of the relationship between the maximum possible building height and the nearest residential dwellings. Yeah, so just something that gives us a sense of, you know, building placement, massing, what that buffer, you know, might look like in general terms, and then that relationship to the adjoining homes. That would help me feel more comfortable with whatever it is that the applicant wants to proceed with, if it's the, the ordinance maximum, or if it's something less. But I would feel better about that before moving this forward to the board with a recommendation.
That makes sense, doesn't it?
Yes, I echo those comments. I, I would like to see some more thought given to potentially taking some things out of the B2 ordinance, proffering some things out that uses that maybe would be inappropriate next to a housing, you know, to such, such a close residential area. Also recognizing, there's also a middle school 1,000 feet up the road. This will be, even with the realigned 640, or realigned Ailer Road, this would be the only B2 use then on the northeastern side of that realigned road. The other B2 uses would be on the southwest side of the realignment, so, you know, I kind of look at that road, you know, as a long-term, as maybe the buffer between B1 and B2. You know, I probably could go with B2 on the corner there, because you are absolutely correct. B2, that would be the first corner lot on the realigned Ailer Road, but having just the wide-open, any B2 use in there concerns me a lot, and no proffers about height or anything like that, or, or additional buffering between you and the residential area is, concerns me a lot there.
Mr. Dunlap.
Madam Chair, I echo some of the same comments. I, to me, right now, this application, I'm not comfortable with it because it looks too much like a blank check. I would like to also to see something addressing maximum building heights, perhaps enhanced screening between the, the existing residential uses and whatever ends up being proposed on this, on this property. I don't know that I could support it in its present form.
Thank you.
Just a comment. I was going to ask when we got done if we could have this, have this among ourselves, because I wanted to hear how everybody else felt about height restrictions and possibly some of the things that could go in there, and great points have been brought up. Just thinking about it, Chris had a good idea of maybe doing some kind of models, because I can see that being B2 there, it probably should be, especially when the road goes in, except for the fact I'd hate to see something overbearing that would do something to the neighborhood, like a motel. You know, a 60-foot motel would, probably don't fit there. This is the way I feel about it.
Any other comments? Mrs. Opeckin.
Madam Chair, I move that we table the application for...
Forty-five.
Forty-five days. Second.
Mr. Unger, would you vote, please?
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Holden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Moen, yes.
And the chair votes, yes. This application is tabled for 45 days. Our next item is the capital improvement plan for 2015, 2016. This is a prioritized list of capital projects in the county that are requested by county departments and agencies, and the plan is created as an informational component of the 2030 comprehensive plan. Mr. Ruddi.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. And again, this is a discussion item this evening, so we're looking for any input the planning commission may want to provide on this capital improvement plan for the 2015, 2016 go-around. With us this evening, I would like to recognize Ms. Gloria Puffenberg, Frederick County Public Works Department, Mr. John Tuchel, Foxon Recreation. They, of course, along with others, participated in putting this CIP together, and would be available if you have any questions of them. The Complan Committee looked at and evaluated the CIP at their December meeting and recommended that the CIP be endorsed, and also recognized its consistency with the county's comprehensive plan. And of course, when it gets back to the planning commission through the public hearing process, is what we're looking to get from the commission, is hopefully a recommendation that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. So from this evening, we'll forward the discussion comments to the board of supervisors and hopefully get direction from the board to move it forward through the public hearing process. Recent years, the number of projects has remained relatively consistent. There are 88 projects in this year's CIP. It's fluctuated a little bit with projects coming off and projects going on, but generally speaking, it's been relatively consistent. And it's been also consistent in reinforcing the connection between the comprehensive plan, future rezonings, and the benefit of the CIP, the capital... plan, future rezonings, and the benefit of the CIP, the capital improvement plan. I think that was, again, illustrated this year and perhaps to a greater extent through the area planning efforts and highlighting of the different land uses and community facilities, and also how different entities work together. I think you'll see that, in particular, the schools and Parks and Recreation, library and schools have looked at opportunities where they may well work together even more in the future, and that's illustrated in some of the projects in the CIP. So, the CIP, of course, contains a very easy-to-read table, three pages of which are included in your agenda, so we won't go through that. But if we need to highlight a particular project in the five-year window in which that's looking to be paid, we certainly can do. The table highlights, and it's described in the CIP, of course, Frederick County Public Schools, County Parks and Recreation, the library system, the Winchester Regional Airport, Public Works, or the county administration, and fire and rescue. So, in addition to the table, the CIP contains four maps. Each of those maps highlight the different projects. The first one being the county in general, which covers county administration, the airport, the library, and because Public Works is part of county administration. The second one being the school locations, the school needs. Third one, Parks and Recreation, with a couple of changes to recognize some existing parks that are under development parks, if you will. And the fourth one being the transportation component of it that's consistent with the county's eastern road plan. And that hasn't changed as far as the projects, as far as the transportation one goes. But to hit on a few of the projects that have moved forward, if you will, been completed, and then I'll touch on a few that have been added, but it's important to recognize that the replacement Frederick County Middle School up in the Gainesboro District is moving forward. It'll be under development. I think they're starting to work out there presently, so that has come off. Airport has removed several parcel acquisitions that have been completed. And Fire and Rescue, the Round Hill Fire Station, is moving forward with its development. Again, a positive move in that area. And of course, that pulls it off the capital improvement plan. Some newer modified projects that have been added under county administration, the new one that you'll see is the Joint Judicial Center renovation slash new facility. That's a two-phase project that has been included. The first phase of that project, for a total of just over $4 million, is moving forward as a joint project, of course, with the city of Winchester. And that is to provide additional space within the existing Joint Judicial Center to accommodate the growing needs of the judicial system. The second phase of that is to be determined, if you will, and that may include additional space, additional renovation, additional, new facility. So, that's a new project that's under county administration. For Parks and Recreation, the pool renovation complex, or renovation of the pool complexes, should I say, is the number-one priority in addition to the development of the Snowden Bridge Park. Parks and Recreation have also highlighted the importance of the indoor aquatic center, and Mr. Tuchel can speak more to that. That was part of the discussion with the schools also, that that provided an opportunity with the fourth high school moving, being a priority on the schools' list. While we're talking about the school's new project that has been included in this year's CIP, is the addition and renovation to the Dow J. Howard Center. It's a facility, of course, that served the county well for a good number of years, but the school system believes it needs to be upgraded, updated, modified to reflect their changing needs. Under Public Works, the Clearbrook Citizen Site is a new project. Of course, the existing Clearbrook facility will need to be moved eventually, and I'm talking with Gloria Puffenberger earlier today, that time will be sooner rather than later. So, that's a new project that's been added reflective of the need to find a new site for the Clearbrook Citizen Site. Under Airport, the General Aviation Terminal, their new terminal building has moved to one of their top priorities. Under Fire and Rescue, the company requests generally remain the same, with Round Hill moving off. Of course, we still have the Clearbrook facility in addition to the Gainesboro facility that are requests of the individual companies. Now, the individual company requests are in no particular order, but they're just provided, if you will. Again, no particular order, no priority. Fire and Rescue Department has prioritized their particular request, and of course, that is Fire Station 22, the apparatus, and the new 23 building, too, down in the southern part of the county. That's a broad summary, if you will, of this year's CIP. We are at the discussion mode, so any input that the Planning Commission would like to provide, and any questions that you would like answered from the folks that are here, we'd be happy to do that tonight as we move it on to the Board of Supervisors.
Anyone for Mr. Ruddy?
Nope.
I've got a nitnoid for you, Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is, in your description, you indicated that the Fire and Rescue Group requests as a subcomponent of the CIP. What is a subcomponent of the CIP?
You really want to go back to that table, don't you?
You say it's a British thing.
I've been here too long to get away with that. So, under Fire and Rescue, and I'll highlight to that section right now, the first four requests, if you will, are from the Fire and Rescue Department as a whole.
I got it, Mike.
Okay.
I got it.
But within the capital requests, you know, the individual capital requests, each individual department, excuse me, individual company has the ability to request the projects that are typically over $100,000 in cost, and then they can list those individually. But there's also the ability for individual requests that are less than that to fall in the first one under that, the $200,000 one, Fire and Rescue Capital Equipment. So, that's the kind of the subsection, if you will, within the table. It allows proffer money to be expended for expenditures that are less than $100,000 within this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Mike would like to take some back to the board. I would say that, just a overview perspective, that this is a good-looking report, and appreciate the work that you put in on it.
Thank you. And I think, again, the different departments and some of these projects...
Yes, the input from them, certainly, but... Do you believe that's it? Okay. Let's see here. Well, we're starting off the year, okay. We will not need our second meeting for January. Mike, excuse me, Eric, do you have the date of that?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. We do not need the January 21st meeting, so we'll need to eliminate that.
Move that we cancel the 21-January meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Anything else for the good of the cause?
Two for German.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.
Stand down, sir.